I will call the August 26, 2021 meeting of the Bassdrop Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. And before we get on with our business, I would ask that we just take a few seconds of silence to remember the 13 Marines and the scores of Afghani citizens that were killed, and pray for the safety of our soldiers that are still there, and the safe escape for the people that are trying to get out. Thank you. Do we have any citizen comments? Anyone signed up for citizen comment?
No ma'am.
That's item number two, so we'll skip right on over that, and we'll go to item three. Items for individual consideration. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the July 29, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please let the record show that it passed unanimously. Item 3B, consider action to approve amended meeting minutes from the April 29, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. Ms. Bills.
Yeah, so there was, we accidentally left a paragraph out on item 3F. There were several items on that meeting, and it just got left out of the final signed copy. So we're bringing it here to amend it, so we can put the correct ones up online.
You mean y'all are admitting you're human?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Very much so.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as amended.
As the second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the amended minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it passed unanimously. Thank you. Item 3C, consider action to approve the Legends Cove Section 2, preliminary plat being 35.228 acres out of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract number three, located southwest of Sayers Road within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bassdrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Bills.
This project is in our statutory ETJ. This is the location map. It's pretty far north, but with miles. So you've got Sayers Road along the front, and then this is the 35 acres. The lots up front were done in a previous minor plat. So the owner of the property came in and he did three lots right along Sayers Road because those had road access and utilities. And then he's now coming in to do the 20 lots that he's going to have to extend infrastructure for. So it's in the statutory ETJ, which is our one mile, and the future land use, it is a rural residential land use type in that area. So we do have our 720 adopted grid requirement in that area. It doesn't follow exactly as it shows on the adopted grid, but it meets the 720 requirements. Because the grid kind of contemplated things being a little more north-south, and with Sayers Road, things got more tilted, so... But it's still providing that connectivity that's necessary.
Could you briefly go over what the 720 grid requirements are for those watching at home?
So 720 grid, with our B3 code amendments and adoption, we adopted a grid layout over the city limits and the entire statutory ETJ. So going north outside the city limits in the ETJ, we laid out, you know, an idea of a 720 grid that would extend existing streets and then put new streets in on that 720. When you take into account a lot of those properties to the north are kind of on a diagonal, it caused the streets to, they were running north-south, east-west, so it kind of cut the property in a strange fashion. So basically, we took that 720 grid that was a north-south, you know, orientation and rotated it to fit the property and to fit the area. So it'll meet the requirements of the 720. It'll provide that connectivity in the future as per the B3 code. So for utilities, the individual lots will utilize onsite wells for domestic water. And then for fire flow, which is a requirement of subdivisions in the ETJ, they'll be extending aqua water service for the fire flow. And then wastewater will be served by onsite sewer facilities, OSSF, which is septic systems. So like I said, Section 1 was done as a minor plat. This is additional 20 residential lots. The average size is about 1.4 acres, which gives them enough space to do both onsite wells and septics. They'll be doing four local streets. And so along the southern, the south-eastern property line, they're extending, I've already forgotten all the names of the streets, I believe Sirius Lane will extend all the way to the property line of the south, so future developments can connect to the south. And then there'll be three future roads that go to the west, and those are all approximately 720. And then this actually runs, there is an aqua easement between the right-of-way and the next property, but that would allow connectivity across that easement to have road connections to the southeast of the property. So we have plenty of opportunity for future connectivity and future development of this There is a creek that kind of runs behind it, so there is a little bit of flood plain, which is why you see some of these lots are larger to account for the natural drainage patterns that are there, and the detention for the development will be in this larger lot towards the southeast, southwest corner. This did go through preliminary drainage plan and preliminary infrastructure plan review, as well as preliminary plat. Those were both approved by our city engineer. The next step after this is to come back with a public improvement plan to actually design and install the utilities. And then after that, the final plat. Any questions?
I did have a question. I was just reading through the notes, I thought I had a lot of time, but I did note on Note 1, it says that the driveways in this subdivision must be constructed to facilitate drainage along the right-of-way. The developer and/or property owner shall be responsible for the installation and maintenance of driveways in accordance with Bassdrop County specifications, and which may include culvert pipe installation. If we're, are we not, how does that work out with our driveways and the type of roadways that we?
So in this case, the road will be a rural residential standard, and that meets our standard, and it meets the county standard. So these roads will be county-maintained roads, once the county, once they're built and the county accepts them. So that means the permits for all these properties will go through the county, and driveway permits are one of the things they issue, so that's their standard plat note for things that are in the county. Because they'll be the ones issuing those driveway permits.
Is the driveway, you said it's going to match up with our standards as well?
The driveway matches the county's standards, because it's a county road that they'll maintain, so it's the standards that they're willing to maintain.
Okay. So in the ETJ, we don't, we don't basically, all of the street types that we have in our code don't apply in the ETJ?
No. Not unless, unless they're doing a more extensive development that requires more urban standards. If they're utilizing organized sewer, then they can utilize some of those standards, but typically, in the county, there'll be the rural residential standard, which is adopted in our code.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item number four will work, move on into our workshop. Item 4A, update on upcoming amendments to the Bassdrop Building Block B3 Code.
So yes, so I was just coming back with an update on where we are. So back in January, end of January, we had our joint meeting with the city council to go over future amendments to the B3 code. And as the years, we're now in August, and we've been working our way through those. So already, the Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed and recommended approval of the signed code, and that went to city council and got approved in late June. At our last meeting, we came back with some wireless transmission facility workshop to discuss those upcoming amendments. Those are currently not addressed in our code. It's something that is a necessary utility throughout town that we have to plan for, so we need to make sure we're addressing them throughout the city to make sure that we have that adequate telecommunications network. And we're currently working on that draft code to bring back in the next couple of months. So that's the next thing that'll be up on, for your consideration and recommendation to city council. So, and this list was also provided in the quarterly report that goes to city council on, there's a lot of information in there if you go online and read that, that gives updates on the planning department, but also all the different departments of the city. But we had this list of kind of where we're at and where we're going. So just kind of recap what we've talked about, that will be coming back, that we are working through. So first thing is, we're going to move the technical manual. Remember, as we adopted the B3 codes, we have the B3 code proper. We have the technical manual that was supposed to contain the processes and some of the more technical information. We have the development manual that has the checklist that you're actually going to turn in that information, helps you fill out your application. And then the Authentic Bassdrop Pattern Book, that's applicable to the historic district. So there's been confusion, some of the standards with the B3 code are in, the B3 code and the technical manual. We're going to collapse those into one document for clarity, so that people can find the information for trees, the requirements in one spot, but the actual detailed information about trees is in the technical manual. So we're going to put that in one place to streamline the code. I think the vision of that was a little different when we were adopting the code, but at the end, the technical manual actually ended up not being as large as we thought it was going to be, so it seems to make more sense to roll that together. So we've started formatting, reformatting the document to start to thread those two together. So that's going to take a little bit of work and just making sure we get everything in the right place.
So for those at home who may want to find this information, where would they look?
If you go to the cityofbassdrop.org and go to the Planning and Development Department page, all of our adopted codes and reference manuals are actually on our front page of our website. So we give basic department information, and if you scroll to the bottom, we have a list of all of our B3 codes, drainage standards, and all of our actual building codes. So you link to all of those different documents.
Thank you.
So on processes, the other thing we're going to look at is amending our warrant and our neighborhood regulating plans, and then the Development Review Committee sections to provide additional clarity, and then to kind of streamline the approval process. All three of these things were new with the code, so I think as we've been implementing the code, we've come up with some probably better definitions, some better standards to really clarify, when is a warrant appropriate versus going and getting a zoning variance? When, how does a neighborhood regulating plan, which doesn't change your zoning work, versus a zoning concept scheme that does change your underlying zoning? So providing a little bit more detail and specification in those sections, we feel will help developers and citizens read the code a little easier.
Yeah, I think it, there's a lot of information there, but if somebody wants to build something once, and you're not going to be a developer that's going to be coming back and back, and you're not going to memorialize these in your brain, whatever we can do to make it easier for the citizens to build a shed or lean to or whatever, I think we need to concentrate on that, because it can be quite frustrating.
And kind of moving into that, we've also discussed creating an infill development process. For those projects like you're talking about, bigger than a shed, but not a new subdivision. So you have, you know, three or four lots, you want to put some new houses in. What does that process look like? And 3.4 acres, remember, is our building block size. So something smaller than a building block, so most likely you're not going to be extending any new streets. You may not have any new utilities, but you're doing something that infill. It's not a brand-new project like a new subdivision would be. So creating kind of that gap. We have, it's very clear if you have one lot and you're doing a building permit, and if you're going to do a new subdivision, the process is clear, but that kind of in-between level, I think we could have a more streamlined process for that. And then also similar to that, have requirements for small drainage projects. So this would be things that still do have a drainage impact, but it's not going to be significant enough to need to do a full drainage study. So have a very clear process. So if you're doing a single-family house that will generate additional runoff, what that looks like, what you need to turn in for just very small projects, and similar to, so that feeds into the making it very clear for those people who are going to do one project and probably not do another one for another 10 years.
A quick question. Just kind of quickly going back to the infill of the 3.4 acres, just thinking about really quickly, I understand kind of where you're looking for, like if you just have a big property on a road that has plenty of access. I think about a number of those lots north of the tracks, where you've got houses all around a massive, you know, two-acre chunk in the middle, and exactly, it seems to, I don't know if that's specifically what you're looking at as well with this plan, because I know that's a whole lot more difficult to parcel out than, you know, three acres that sits on a corner and has plenty of kind of frontage space. And so as you're going through that, because that's where people are going to look to develop that infill, and just make sure that whatever we come up with, we'll solve. There's like three or four of those up there?
Yeah, there's a couple, we call them like donated holes, that kind of have very little access, or some don't have any access back to a public street. So creating what the process looks like, because we have someone trying to do that, they're trying to incrementally get a small street through, so the properties can be developed. So kind of memorializing that process for an infill to make it clear. So it's not a full neighborhood regulating plan, it's not, you know, it's a, you know, very small-scale plan, but having that plan to make sure everything's addressed properly. In our subdivision or plating codes...
Hang on, Jim. I'll play out the question.
You're talking about the requirements for small drainage. What kind of drainage are we talking about for these? Is it just still a letter, or how is that handled now?
So our stormwater drainage manual does not actually kick in unless you're subdividing, you're disturbing more than 10,000 square feet of area, or you're putting down more than 5,000 square feet of impervious cover. But you do, and that was where kind of we started with, with the Drainage Moratorium was, sometimes you have people that are putting in a brand-new house, they're not going to be putting in more than 5,000 square feet of impervious cover, they're not going to be disturbing more than 10,000 square feet of area, but they actually are creating a drainage runoff that's impacting the neighbors or impacting the street, and having a clear, so you're not having to do a full engineered drainage plan, but having a process where you can do some quick calculations that would assist you on knowing how to properly get that drainage to the right place, or to create an area on the lot that would slow that water down before it hits the street or your neighbor. So that, those kind of, that situation. So with our subdivision code, one of the things we've talked about in the past is doing some additional plating exemptions. So currently, if your property is not platted, there are several exemptions we have in our code. One of them being, if your property has been in that same configuration with road access since April 20, 1981, that was the date we adapted our first subdivision code. So that's our magical date. Anything after that, someone's usually deed-divided without going through the subdivision process properly. That being said, there are things that can change your property that did not necessarily, or things you're doing that don't require plating. So one is right-of-way takings. If text dot came through and chopped off 20 feet of the front of your property, your property changed shape from no fault of your own, so that would be an additional exemption. If you're adding on to your house, you're not encouraging on any setbacks, you know, but you haven't been properly platted, that would be an exemption. So, and another one we've talked about is utilities. You get sometimes utility substations, where they're needing to buy a piece of property in the middle of someone else's land, but they don't actually have street frontage, having an exemption for those situations, because an electric substation doesn't always need street frontage, or a lift station out in aqua's territory doesn't always need a street frontage. So things like that, that makes sense. Also, one of the things we've run up against, that there are properties, so our code, that exemption is properties that have been in existence prior to 1981 and have street frontage. We do have properties in the ETJ, especially that they deed-divided off of a private access easement. So they don't actually have a real street, they have a private access easement. Sometimes that is, looks and functions as a street, but it's not actually publicly dedicated. So creating a policy whereby that those can be recognized as long as they're being maintained, and all the owners have signed off on that easement. And then also, so one of the features of our code is we've adopted the transportation grid, and the subdivision code then requires going down to, in different zoning categories, a 330-foot grid. And that's to create connectivity, create parallel routes, so you don't get congestion. When you have an accident on the one road, you can move to the next road. We have developments that sometimes don't want to follow that, or they want to change the grid. So we're recommending if someone wants to do that, that they're, that will need a review of a traffic impact analysis will be required, because they're going to create, when you have all of your traffic that goes to one or two points, you can create new traffic situations at those intersections, and that's when you do a traffic impact analysis that would look at making off-site upgrades. So your site's creating off-site problems because you're concentrating the new traffic in a new spot. So that would be our recommendation. If you follow the grid, you don't have to. Or if you have a geographically sensitive reason that doesn't require, you know, that would make it really hard and would make sense to put in a road, that still wouldn't trigger a TIA. It's if there's not a, not a clear reason, you just don't really want to do it.
Question on that. So, I mean, is that a choice, or is that an approval they have to get first?
It would still be approval, but it would be if you want to come and suggest the zoning concept scheme that does not have that gridded structure, you've also got to accompany that then with a traffic impact analysis to show where your choke points would be.
But still with no guarantees of acceptance?
Nope. Because that TIA then would inform...
They just, they just have to do the TIA prior to presenting the idea.
Yeah, because the TIA is what then determines where, you know, where that traffic's going to go, if all of it's going to go one direction and now back up that stoplight, they may need to put in an additional lane, you know, intersecting 71, so.
But kind of like you said, this is kind of for the process of, they have no real great reason for doing it, other than they just don't want to.
Yeah.
And so if we have no real great reason for denying it, other than we just don't want to approve it, that's okay too.
Yeah.
Even though they've done their analysis and everything else.
Yeah. It still needs to meet the intent of the code, so, or have a, show how they're meeting the intent through, as we like to say, doing different, the doing different process, so.
Who sets the requirements or parameters of the TIA?
So typically on, for a traffic impact analysis, their engineer meets with our TIA reviewer, which we have a third party that we consult for that, and they set its scope. So they look out at a certain area for the project and identify specific intersections and specific roadways that they need to study and do traffic counts, so they can measure the impact they're going to have from the traffic they generate, so. And that was how our old process, every development that generated more than 2,000 average daily trips had to do one. Sometimes they would not, they would not be required until, if it was a shopping center, the third lot developed, and then now all of a sudden the third lot owner's having to do a TIA. It's a very piecemeal approach. Our block and grid requirements actually do meet a lot of the need for the TIA, but if you're going to eliminate those roads, then we have to measure the impact. One of the things we've discussed, I think, pretty in-depth, is establishing some additional ETJ standards. Right now, when we're looking at plats in the ETJ, we look at utility connections, making sure that they're served with utilities, roads, and drainage. Those are the main three things. But we don't actually have any minimum or maximum lot sizes. When you get outside of the statutory ETJ, we didn't adopt the grid in the statutory, so what we're recommending in this, even in parts of the statutory and the voluntary ETJ, is to eliminate the strict grid requirement as it's shown adopted on the map, and go to a maximum block length requirement, which would be the 720 block length. So it gives people the flexibility when their property does, is at a diagonal to the main road, they can set those streets, not strictly a north-south grid like the rest of town is, so. But so establishing those ETJ standards.
So as came up in the last one there, why don't we have our roadway types also trying to make that connectivity?
Our what?
The roadway types that we have.
Mm-hmm.
That we have, I was just looking over the roadway type for rural, and it shows sidewalks on it.
Mm-hmm.
But in the one that we just approved, there were no sidewalks.
It does have, sidewalks are optional, so.
Optional.
And part of it is that, since the county is going to be who maintains that, they only will maintain sidewalks on a certain type of street. So they do have an urban street style that they do maintain sidewalks, or they have to be maintained by an HOA. So in case this was a very rural subdivision, we deem sidewalks were not required. And part of the reason also is, if you look at that chart, those, all those street types are required with a place type. We don't have place types in the ETJ. So that's part of why we need to look at the ETJ standards for plating, is if we want to establish specific road types, then we'll need to tie those to lots and subdivision configurations, not place types.
I guess it goes back to the connectivity and walkability that we're trying to push, and if we're saying that, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to get those sidewalks in later on, unless we built them in at this stage, I think.
Well, I think when they're over an acre lot, I think sidewalks are not as, especially when you're out in that rural of an area, the surrounding properties still at this point are large tract ranch and kind of more farm operations. So our code is meant to be able to evolve over time and to set up the subdivisions to have that space to do that. So with the 55 and 1/2 foot right-of-way, it allows that space to put in future sidewalks when the building types and all of that...
Yeah, it's just our rural streets say sidewalk, but the county doesn't have to do it, so when there's going to be that connectivity at the edge, it just seems to me like that, that's, maybe we need to change ours.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why we need to look at our ETJ standards. So one of the other things in our code is, we currently, if you're within 300 feet of an existing water sewer line, you have to connect to that sewer line, but if you're beyond that, you can ask for an exemption for not connecting. We'd like to move that requirement to a half a mile, because 300 feet's not even a full building block. So you could be a little more than a building, a building block away from a sewer line and not have to connect even in the city limits. So this assists in our orderly development and making sure we're getting that continuity of services with water lines, fire flow, and wastewater. And then revising our standards and process for approving public improvement plan agreements. So these are, we liked the alliterative name when we were doing the code, they're really subdivision construction agreements. Not everything in that agreement is always actually a public improvement, some of it is maybe subdivision stormwater requirements that they have to make, but it's required for that subdivision to be built. So just kind of revising some of the wording in that agreement, and probably calling it a subdivision construction agreement, which is what all of our engineers understand. This, the wording actually has confused a lot of people, and we feel like if we streamline this process, it's something that can be done administratively, because most of the approvals really are by our city engineer, that we're accounting for the infrastructure being built proper, being financed, that we have the money set aside, either in a performance agreement, or that they build all that infrastructure before the city accepts that public infrastructure. In our zoning section, one of the things that we would like to look at is doing a planned development district zoning amendment process. We do have several leg... We do have several legacy, we call them legacy planned development districts, at Pecan Park, Hunter's Crossing, Bastrop County, actually. They all have existing planned developments, but if they need to make a change to their, their zoning in that planned development district, we don't really have a clear process. We have a, the process, the new process for new zoning districts, it doesn't really address how to amend an existing planned development district. As, as, there are still several tracks in Hunter's Crossing that need to build out, that's something that we foresee is an issue, and just something we wanna make sure we have a clear path when those situations arise. Similarly, we, we need to adopt the zoning, the standard zoning to the place type district conversion chart, because a lot of those legacy planned development district documents call out base districts for certain standards. So you'll see in Hunter's Crossing, it says follow C1 standards. Well, we erased C1, C1 became P5. So we just need to make sure it points towards the right standard. And then this is kind of like the random stuff of our codes. We've talked to the historic land commi, commission, landmark commission, see if I can say it right, about clarifying some of the historic standards in the Authentic Pattern Book. When we were originally reviewing that, state law changed on us in the middle, and the pattern book was going to originally apply to all of town, then was not gonna apply to any town of town, and then just ended up applying to just the historic district. So we need to, to clarify a few of the processes in there and language, especially related to fences. The, right now, the Development Review Committee has to approve all fences in the Eridel Historic District. We'd like to make that, as long as they're meeting specific standards, those can be done administratively. So that person who comes in once every 10 years to redo their fence, that it's not a long process for them. Also, one of the things that we've, has always been a, kind of a question is the short-term rentals, which Airbnb's, VRBOs, those are all in that category. So in our, in our new codes, the, they're largely form-based, so if you're in a residential district and you fall under the International Residential Code, that use is allowed in that building. So there is a level of, of short-term rentals that can be done in your P3 neighborhood districts, and they have, but they have to follow certain rules of the International Residential Code. Once you trip over a certain number of rooms, a certain number of people staying there, then it actually becomes something that needs to be regulated by the International Building Code. So we just need to make sure that that's clear in all of our documentation, and kind of maybe point back to that in the B3 codes. We just need to clarify some language on manufactured housing versus mobile homes.
I'll blow heads a question.
One question on the short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
I know the city of Austin, because they don't want, like neighborhoods to be saturated with short-term rentals, like in the event of ACL Fest, they actually have a slotted number or a certain amount that had to be applied for. Are we gonna try to do the same thing, or?
Not at this time. So I will say, cities, some other cities, a similar size to us, I've kind of formed a little think group, I think. Viviana gets to be our representative on that, she's super excited. But there, we're gonna kind of meet every, I think, quarter or six months to kind of collect what other cities are doing on short-term rentals, especially cities kind of Bastrop size. Because Austin, I mean, there's a lot, certain neighborhoods definitely get oversaturated. I will say, I don't know that we've seen any particular issues on Airbnb's. There's been some select, specific issues every once in a while, but overall, it's not something that's come up, it's just, we need to be making sure that if someone decides to convert to a short-term rental, that they have their smoke detectors and fire extinguishers, that's kind of the, the big thing. But we'll continue to monitor that as we go along, so if that's something that becomes an issue, that'll be a policy discussion. For clarity of language on manufactured, we, we didn't really specify the difference between a manufactured house and a mobile home in our code. Mobile homes were a specific unit type that was not inspected by anyone. Manufactured housing is specifically inspected by the HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department, and built to a specific standard. Mobile homes were not, and so most cities don't allow those, because, those are things that predate 1976. So just making sure that people don't move in a 1975 mobile home into town, so. And then our ETJ, ETJ signs corridors, that's something we've talked about several times here, and I think that'll be something we wanna do when we look at the ETJ subdivision standards, is look at those specific corridors, 1209, 969, 71, and establish some, some sign standards for those corridors. So that is all I've got. Any, any other questions? But those are, so, we're, we'll be working on all of these, starting with the wireless transmission facilities, and I think, and then going on to the ETJ standards, and starting to work on the code.
Quick question. How is a prefab house categorized?
Those are typically categorized as a modular home, and those are, are regulated under the building code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. Excuse me. Now, move, move on to item five, updates, update on, five A, update on recent City Council actions regarding planning department items.
We haven't had anything from the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded to, on the council lately. We, at the last meeting, had a presentation by a developer that is looking to do some additional municipal utility districts out off of 812 and Highway 21. So that sounds a little far out, but anything in the ETJ, be it the statutory or the voluntary, by state law, those have to come to the city to ask for consent to create the muds. So those will, that, that developer plans to make application to the city in the next couple of months, so that discussion will be forthcoming on those, and what, what, what level of review and involvement the city will have on those municipal utility districts. And then we're still, at the next meeting, we should have the Veridian Public Finance Agreement for their PID, so.
Moving on to item 5B, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items be put listed on future agendas.
I sent you something, but.
Yes.
That's important.
Yeah, so Pablo requested, and Debbie agreed to put on our next agenda discussing short-term, or time shares. And it's, I think, kind of a different type, yeah, a different type of time share, so that'll be on our agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Item 5C, Building Department and Planning Department Monthly Projects Volume Report. This was at our seats when we got here.
Yep, so if you'll see, so, new single-family residential, we did 33 for the month of July, that's actually a slight decrease from June, we did 45. So, still busy, just maybe not as hair-on-fire busy. But as I've said, we've got a lot of future developments coming up, and we've got the development agreements that the City Council's already approved, that those will be moving on through the planning stages and then into the building phase, so I think we'll be busy for the foreseeable future.
Jennifer, what's a will-serve letter?
A will-serve letter, it goes to the utility department, and it is asking if we have capacity in a area. So, a lot of times a commercial developer will ask, is there a wastewater capacity on that line for another 100, 100 units of wastewater on that line?
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. See what fills up y'all's days these days. Okay, we'll move on to item 6.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much.